And we now move on to Article S, which will be followed by...
I.
I.
I?
S then I. S and then I.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Ready? Select person Sheedy moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to initiate, research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity and natural gas load of the residents and businesses in Rockport and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute such instruments.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Does this mean? Anybody? Yes.
Bob, Bill Wagner.
Okay.
Charles Peterman again, 22 Pleasant Street. I've never seen a collision of quite so many prepositional clauses that look like English but that I can't decipher. Could somebody please explain to me what this aggregation means or does and how it would impact the town finances or the quality of life? I'm befuddled.
Huh.
Uh, Bill Wagner. This actually has nothing to do with town finances or has very little to do, but it is something that Mass Area Planning Council is promoting amongst communities to, for communities to aggregate the residence usage, electrical usage, into a common pool in order for them to save money. The purpose of this article is merely to study it, not to adopt it, um, and see if there's any merits to the idea. I think it would have to be, I'm not sure of the procedure for adopting it, probably would be another town meeting in the future. So this just says...
There will be no town meeting in the future. We're just gonna continue with this one. Why don't we hear anyone from the Board of Selectmen?
Erin Battistelli, you know, in my estimation, this is sort of an example of how communities need to sort of try to work together to figure out better ways of, of saving energy, saving costs on energy, and that this would just open the door for that.
Got a couple of people standing, and then we'll hear from you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Aunt Petrisicki, 11 Eden Road. So the article itself, the motion says, um, "to participate in a contract or contracts." That's a little past research. I just want to point that out, that it does not just say, "initiate, research, and develop," it says, "participate in contracts to aggregate." Thank you.
I'd like to propose, Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street...
Well, wait a minute, we've already heard from you, so I gotta hear from other people. We'll get back to you.
Just a clarification from the...
Say your name.
John Penelozza. A clarification from the writers of this article. Does that mean that Rockport, um, individuals or, or, you know, citizens would lose the opportunity to choose their electric provider? Would we therefore become part of a monopoly-supplied customer pool that's captive to whoever is agreed to, to be the provider?
No, the wording...
Erin?
The wording in the, um, motion in the article, it says that, um, it retains the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out.
Okay. Laura?
I'm still confused on whether they're just gathering data on our total usage or they're providing a way to do bulk buying. I don't understand what this article's trying to do.
Anybody understand this, wanna talk about it?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I, I think it's to try to reduce rates, to get the lowest rates for electricity.
Ted, maybe you understand this?
Frederick Carr, 154 Main Street. I think, isn't this being looked into by the Green Communities Committee? I think they've, they've been getting a lot of data. They're doing an excellent job. I don't want to interfere or complicate their efforts.
Mr. Moderator?
They're out foraging. Yes.
Um, the green community is, uh, starting many projects to, uh, reduce energy costs. This, however, is a, uh, regional effort or research with the MAPC. That, that's who's spearheading this.
So not interfere with green communities?
Wouldn't interfere with any of the projects the green community's doing.
Thank you.
Oh, MAPC is Metropolitan Area Planning Committee, Commission. Council.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. Because I'm very unclear on the nature of the proposed contract or contracts, I'd like to propose an amendment where we strike that clause from this motion. So the amendment is that "and participate in a contract or contracts" is struck. Just to clarify that this is simply for research and development.
So there is an amendment to strike out the words "and participate in a contract or contracts." That is before us now. Moved and seconded. So now we'll discuss that amendment. Is it fun? Yes.
Sure. Sarah Wilkinson. Um, I think this obviously came from the M- MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which at hand, who I think he's not here anymore, is now the town's representative to that. My guess is that taking that sentence out would make the whole thing no, so, just as an FYI.
That's true. Why not? That, that's correct, because the MAPC is really doing the research. So if, if the town can't take, avail itself of any savings, then it really wouldn't make any sense to pass this.
Okay.
And just to add, there's no money associated with this, so not, none of this would cost, nothing here would cost the town any money. There's no appropriation of funds. It's basically asking us to join in data collection.
Erin?
Um, so Bob, I mean, this would be an example that if you have a homeowner searching out, you know, bids for whatever, you know, they're, they're needing service for, um, and you have 20 homeowners who get together and say, "Look, we, you know, we, we all need the same thing, um, so let's all get together and try to get the best price going." So there's kind of strength in numbers when you get together with other communities and look into where can we, you know, get the best rates. I think that's really what it is.
Okay.
So based on that clarification, it sounds like this is a public option for buying electricity, right? You could keep going through your regular electric company, or you could have a public option which presumably might offer you a lower kilowatt hour rate. So I guess this is a really good thing. Thanks.
Toby.
As Bill Wagner noted at the Finance Committee meeting, the trouble with it is the phrase "opt out." Uh, if we go along with it, uh, and the town of Rockport decides that this is advantageous, we're all swept along on the town's coattails unless we have the presence of mind to open the envelopes from the, from the utilities and recognize what we see as, you know, a choice that you have to make. It's like being sent notices of stock options, and if you don't do anything, uh, decisions are made for you. So that's a problem. And I don't know whether you all open all the rubbish you get from, uh, the electric utility. Uh, if you don't recognize it as a bill, you probably throw it right in the trash where it belongs, and you may find yourself willy-nilly swept up in this.
And that was Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. He did not identify himself, but that, I believe that's who that is. So now we have a motion to amend to strike out from Article, uh, the motion under Article S, "and participate in a contract or contracts." You've heard the amendment. All those favor of making that amendment will press 1, and we'll have six seconds to do so. If you're against that amendment, you will press 2. The amendment fails. So now we are back onto Article S, needing no further discussion because we're done with such things. All those in favor of Article S, press 1. Opposed, press 2. You will have six seconds, starting now. Motion carries. We now move on to Article I, which will be followed by... A. I and then A.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Roger Levine moves that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to the General Stabilization Fund for the purposes of Article I as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on... To, after A, we will have... L. A and then L.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Select person Minnie Sheedy moves that the town expend the sum of $189,641.87 or such other sum as is made available to the town under the provision of Mass General Laws, Chapter 90.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there is none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on to Article L, which will be followed by Article N. So now we're on to L.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Selectman Campbell moves that the town supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, provided that in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder shall, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost...
Bless you, sorry, not you, him. Bless you too.
Of the costs of the issuance of such bonds and notes may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Heard the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on to N, which will be followed by K.
Yes, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Minnie Sheedy moves that the town amend Chapter 7, Subchapter A, entitled Budget and Fiscal Procedures, Section 12 of the Rockport Code of Bylaws by deleting the words "date of mailing" and replacing them with the words "due date" for the purpose of changing the date from which interest can be calculated on water and sewer bills from the mail date to the due date to be consistent with Sections 138, 140 through 141, and 248 of the Municipal Modernization Act.
Moved and seconded, and I believe this one requires us to hear from if he wants to, uh, present a report from the Government Bylaw Committee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Sullivan on the Bylaw Committee. This is necessary to comply with Massachusetts law, and will save all of you money, uh, as it will, uh, from that point forward, calculate interest not when the bills go in the mail, but when they're actually due.
And there's another one that needs, uh, discussion by the Bylaw Committee, so we'll do G after N. Any discussion on N?
Yeah, um, Larry Salo, 45 Salkum Avenue. Finally, something I have knowledge of. Postmarks. The, uh, the post office has changed their regu-, their, uh, rules a couple of years ago where they don't have to have, you mail a letter in Rockport, it gets to Rockport the next day. That's no longer the case. Um, so I've, I've always been an advocate of, um, doing it by the postmark, because there's no telling with automation now. I've seen cards mailed from Juneau, Alaska, and they show up in Rock, they're going to Juneau, Alaska, and they show up in Rockport because the computer sprayed the wrong barcode on it. So I'm an advocate for the barcode, I mean, for the postmark, and, um, also, on a personal, I, I got, uh, assessed a fee for a parking ticket. It was due on the 9th, and they assessed the fee on the 6th before the due date. So I, and I, I had already mailed it, it just didn't get there, I think because of a snowstorm. So I'm an advocate for the postmark date.
And we don't want you to go postal on us.
It's no longer the case for me.
All right. Anything further on this?
Um, I'm gonna agree with Larry on this, that it should be...
Please state your name for the record.
John Penelozza. Um, it should be incumbent on, uh, town government to get their bills out on time, and citizens to react to when they're actually receiving the mail.
They're not understanding this.
And I believe that the effect of this is to calculate interest from the date the bill is due to when it's received versus from the date that the bill was mailed to you. That's my understanding. So if we affect this, uh, and also, it's also my understanding that this frankly is to comply with, uh, Massachusetts general laws, so I, I don't think it's really one where there's actually much discretion. We're just updating the bylaws to reflect the state of the law. But the change is when they calculate interest, they will be using, uh, the date that it's due compared to when they receive it versus when they send it to you. So I, I believe there's some confusion about how that's being calculated currently, unless somebody wants to correct me on that.
So we have to follow this to, to follow the law. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, and I'm also saying that the concerns where people are talking about, uh, as Larry pointed out, you might put a letter in the mail, it may take a while to get to the treasurer. That's not the date that it's issued. It's not the date you're putting it in the mail. They've been calculating interest from the date they put it in the mail to you, and this stops that practice. So I think if that clarifies anything.
So it helps people, and we have to do it to follow the law. Is that what you're saying? Okay. And we still wanna talk about this? Okay, go ahead.
Lady Miacchio, Oak Circle. Given that it is, has to do with Massachusetts law, are homeowners due any sort of rebate for charges that were calculated on the, um, not the due date, but the date of mailing?
It's not really within the scope of the article, but the answer from legal is no. Yes?
22 Pleasant Street, Charles Peterman. Quick question. Didn't we receive, um, property assessment taxes this year that were sent after the due date? And how would that play out if, due to some error at, in town, that the bills weren't sent out until after their due date? How does that figure into this?
I think it, anybody here?
Mr. Moderator?
Have any, any knowledge of that? Yeah. I think they calculate a new due date when they do that.
They do.
Yeah. Any further discussion on this thing that helps people and is required by law? Okay. You've heard the motion on this article. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We now go on to G.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Erin Battistelli moves that the town reauthorize pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish revolving funds and spending limits for fiscal year 18 as stated in Article G on the warrant and as shown on Pages 60 and 61 of the Voters' booklet, with the insertion of the words "and rental management" after maintenance and before purposes as indicated on the revised chart for the community house revolving fund, and to set fiscal year spending limits for such revolving funds as depicted on the spending limit table on Page 62 of the Voters' booklet, and further to amend Chapter 7 of the Rockport Code of Bylaws, Subchapter A, Budget and Fiscal Procedures, by inserting a new Section 10 entitled Establishment of Revolving Accounts, and as shown in Article G of the warrant and renumbering the subsequent sections.
Moved and seconded. Commander Sullivan, do you wanna speak to this? No. No. But the Government and Bylaw Committee did review it?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Brian Sullivan, the Bylaw Committee. This was reviewed by the Bylaw Committee and found to be consistent, uh, with the bylaws. Uh, since I'm up here, I point out that the way it's drafted, uh, the money that is being discussed has specific sources, uh, of receipt and specific purposes for expenditure, uh, which, uh, seem to be sufficient to answer accountability questions, uh, at least from our perspective.
Okay. Toby.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. I think the article does two quite different things and should be invoked in two parts. Uh, one part changes the bylaws, which is a serious matter, and the other establishes a yearly cap for the two funds. Could we vote it in two parts?
Let's let Attorney Klein give us his opinion.
I'm not gonna answer your question yet, but I wanna just clarify something. The, the reason that the article's appearing in the form that it is, is as a result of the Municipal Modernization Act, one of the changes is that revolving funds have to be created by bylaw and the annual limits also set by that bylaw. I don't know if that changes how you wanna vote it, but both, both are required now by law to have a revolving fund.
Well, I know we're not supposed to have a conversation. I really don't feel that satisfactory. I think they're two quite different things, and I think the change in the bylaw is altogether a mistake. Uh, if it's not broken, you don't need to fix it. And the system which existed before the existence of these revolving funds worked perfectly well. I went to inquire of the town accountant, and she had had no trouble with the operation of the funds. On the 17th of March, I wrote a letter to the Finance Committee asking them if they had had trouble with the accounting for either the community house or, uh, the council on aging. I've not got an answer to that question. I also asked them if there had been trouble with the town's independent auditors, if they had found fault with the accounting for either of those funds. No answer on that question. And I asked if the Department of Revenue had found fault with the operation of the two funds, and no answer on that question either. So I think we're assuming something is broken when it isn't. And there are other models for funds in place, such as the Waterways Fund and the Parking Fund, and this one, these ones are objectionable because we lose control altogether. In any case, whether or not we approve this, we have no control over the money going into the funds, uh, and if we approve of this, the only control over the money going out of the funds is the cap, and there is no accounting. I've been assured by the Board of Selectmen and Linda Sanders, after nagging, that, uh, there would be an account in, in the town report separately for each of them. I'd like to hear that confirmed by the board. And even with that in place, uh, it's a, another case where the Board of Selectmen are taking control of something that properly ought to be the sphere of the town meeting. And if we're not told by the Finance Committee that the current system is broken, I think we should say no to it.
Just, just the legal question. I just wanna be clear. It's, if you are gonna have, the, the way revolving funds works has not changed. The change in the law is that if you are going to have a revolving fund, it must be created by bylaw, or you cannot have a revolving fund, uh, any longer. That is what the law requires, the new law.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
So Bob for the board? Bob, over here.
Where, where's that voice coming from?
So Erin Battistelli for the board. Um, to, I'll, I'll confirm on behalf of the board that that information will be part of next year's town report. Um, and also, am I correct? And Linda, correct me if I'm wrong. So in vote, we have to come back to town meeting to reauthorize this revolving fund. So I think it's important that we vote, um, to support that because the money, um, in this way, the rental fees, um, that are charged to people go into this revolving fund, and then the expenses associated with the community house, um, are able to be paid.
So I need nine other people that wanna divide this, but, but we've just heard from Town Council that that will make that illegal, so...
So it doesn't make any sense.
Right, that you can't divide the question and have the one. You can't have one without the other.
That's right.
Yeah. So both would have to pass. So do we have nine other people that wanna divide this? But either both pass, or it doesn't pass. Nine other people. I see your vote, Toby. Nine other people. Okay, we're not gonna divide the question. Any further comments on this from anybody other than Toby? Okay. You have, you have heard the question. You have heard the question. All those in favor, press 1 on your clicker. And all those opposed, press 2. And you will have six seconds. Ready, go. Time. Motion carries by 79%. We move on from G to K, and then K will be followed by... V as in Victor. K.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Select person Sheedy moves that the town accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, providing a statutory procedure for providing notice and disposing of abandoned funds in the custody of the town.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on to Article V, which will be followed by... M. V. Okay. And we have, I believe, the citizens here would prefer that Linda read the, the motion? Okay, then they'll discuss it.
You want me to? Okay. Uh, Mr. Moderator, petitioner Sarah Kelly moves to see if the town, in consideration of the current and increasing role of money in politics, which threatens the democratic ideals upon which our republic was founded, and in an effort to restore confidence in our democracy, will vote to pass a resolution that it is the position of the town of Rockport that in order to ensure that our elected officials represent us, tough new anti-corruption laws, such as the American Anti-Corruption Act, being put forth by a grassroots, nonpartisan movement known as Represent Us, must be enacted by Congress and the Massachusetts General Court, including legislation to prohibit politicians from taking campaign money from industries they regulate, put limits on unregulated superpacs and other groups, increase transparency for campaign funding, stop elected representatives and senior staff from negotiating jobs while in office, and bar them from all lobbying activity for five years once they leave. in office, and bar them from all lobbying activity for five years once they leave, empower all voters through a one hundred dollar or more tax rebate to contribute to the candidates they support, and strengthen agencies and ethics committees to enforce the rules against politicians and special interests that break campaign finance laws. And to see if the town will further resolve to request our elected leaders, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, Congressman Seth Moulton, State Senator Bruce Tarver, and State Representative Ann-Margaret Ferrante, to lead the effort to enact these initiatives in their respective legislative bodies and to provide each of them with a copy of this resolution.
And we'll include Senator Markey also. Right? Yeah, okay.
I wasn't told about him.
Yeah. We don't want to leave him out. He'll get, he'll get bummed out. All right. Moved and seconded.
Mr. Moderator, can I request that Abby Cale O'Brien also be recognized? And do I need to make the amendment for Edward Markey to be added?
No. Sneak it in there.
By voting for this non-binding resolution today, we're not changing our laws in Rockport, but we are sending a clear message to our representatives. We've made a lot of cuts, so just hold on one second. Americans from the left, right, and center are coming, oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. This motion, and those like it in other towns, stand together to direct our elected officials. It says we want them to support nonpartisan anti-corruption laws in our state and in Washington that will do two things: Stop political bribery by lobbyists; End secret money, so Americans know who is buying political power; And fix our broken elections, so the people are in control. Americans from the left, right, and center are coming together to promote and pass laws that make corruption illegal. Rockport is one of thirty towns across Massachusetts introducing similar anti-corruption resolutions this year. State anti-corruption acts reform campaign finance laws and support common sense ethics. And every state we win gets us one step closer to passing the American Anti-Corruption Act in the federal government. We, the people, have the power to fix our broken system. When it comes to our political system, big money doesn't just talk. It roars, like a nor'easter. How many of our voices are lost in that storm? How many of us throw our hands up at the power of special interests, or believe corruption is stifling democratic ideals? When are we going to say enough? Well, Rockport can say that today. And today, with a yes vote, we can say, on our watch, government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth.
Yes.
Jonathan Ring, Nine Pools Lane. I'd like to propose two amendments to this, to this non-binding resolution.
Why two?
One amendment I would like to propose is to delete the sentence, empower all voters through one hundred, a one hundred dollar or more tax rebate to contribute to all candidates they support. To delete the sentence, sorry. I make that motion. May I continue?
Is it seconded? I think you need to come up here and show us what you're doing.
Okay.
We'll see if there's a second on it. Is there a second on that? Second, okay. Why don't you let us know so we can, we can work on that. All right, you've heard the motion to amend this non-binding resolution, citizens' resolution. Any discussion on that? Okay. You want to discuss that? Sure. What the heck?
I think a one hundred dollar or more tax rebate sounds great, except that that means that those who are more powerful than you or I can contribute up to the one thousand dollar limit to a candidate. The one thousand dollar limit was changed, it used to be five hundred dollars per individual contribution, but now they raised it to a thousand dollars about a year ago or more. So those with more money can game the system, if they choose to, by getting that tax refund. All they have to do is get one, get more and more people to contribute that are more powerful, and then they can just get a one thousand dollar write-off.
I think so.
Which, you know, if anybody wants to contribute a thousand dollars to me and get a write-off, that'd be great. That's not a slogan, but. But the other thing, too, is just contribute, just having a tax write-off or rebate invites the IRS to come in and audit individuals for the contributions they're giving to candidates. We already saw corruption in the IRS a few years ago, in 2013, that they were auditing both liberal and conservative groups, but even more conservative groups, by asking all these strange questions, trying to, and just, these are groups alone, so why do we need to give the IRS more involved and more power? So there's just those couple things wrong with it. So I think that I'd like to see it deleted if we're going to send a message to our representatives. Thanks.
Any more comments just on deleting this sentence? Just on deleting this sentence? Okay.
Alan McMillan, Eighteenth Story Street. I agree with Johnson, and I support his amendment on this. Say you had a thousand people reduce their taxes by a thousand dollars, that's one hundred thousand dollars less tax money going to things that tax money supports, so I support his amendment.
Any further discussion on just this, removing this sentence? Okay. You have heard the motion to amend this non-binding resolution to remove that sentence, which says empower all voter, empower all voters through a hundred dollar or more tax rebate to contribute to the candidates they support. All those in favor of amending this by removing that sentence, press one. All those opposed, press two. And we will have six seconds. All right, stop. Here we go. And that fails. So now we are still looking at this non-binding resolution as it is written. Any further discussion on it? We have a gentleman standing up. We'll hear from him first.
John Whittaker, Three Marshall Lane. I'm wondering who defines what a lobbyist is, what Represent Us is, are they nonpartisan, and who defines that, and how it directly affects the town?
All right, it doesn't affect the town at all, it's non-binding, and there's a whole series of, of memoranda explaining it in the article. All right, Mr. Sullivan?
Brian Sullivan, Seventh Gott Street. Mr. Moderator, I again urge that this be rejected. Not that these aren't important issues and that they're complicated. I'd suggest they're very complicated. Hold a rally on Dock Square, write your congressman, have an informational session. This resolution, understanding it's non-binding, covers various grounds that are complex. I don't think we're going to resolve that at seven o'clock at night, after having gone through very serious budgetary issues. For example, this includes that elected representatives can't...
For any purpose as a lobbyist. It's all disclosed to the Secretary of State twice a year, and the Secretary of State operates that division with an iron hand. You cannot fool the system, I can guarantee. And likewise, the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, it does an excellent job of educating. They've asked me to publish articles in our newsletters to inform businesses what the rules are, for and again, what you can do and what you cannot do with campaign contributions. So it's a very complex system, and in Massachusetts, the rules are very good, and I would ask town meeting not to take action without further education on what actually is done in the state to control what you're trying to control, which is corruption, and to make sure our system operates in a way that serves all of us very well. Because I don't think any one of you want to be in a situation where you don't have representation on Beacon Hill, and unless you're going to Beacon Hill yourself, you have someone representing to you, no matter what your position is. Thank you.
Okay. Given that this is non-binding and that we have four more articles to get through, I'm going to hear briefly from Sarah and Abby, if they wish, and then we're going to vote on this.
Thank you for your questions and comments. First, I'd like to just address who Represent Us is. It's a fiercely nonpartisan, nationwide grassroots movement. If you look on their Board of Advisors, you'll see everyone from Republican strategists to people in the Tea Party, to constitutional legal scholars such as Larry Lessig. So it does represent a wide swath of the American public in terms of political opinion. This is one of the few issues that most of us agree on. And that also speaks to who drafted the proposed legislation. It was drafted by constitutional experts, so the question as to what is an industry, what is a lobbyist, all of that is well taken care of in the legal language.
And also, I'd like to address the issue of this being taken up by the town. Before this meeting, we pledged allegiance to that flag and to our republic. And I feel like this is about our republic, and Rockporters are Americans, and we need to stand up and talk about this issue.
And I would like to thank both of you for, for doing this. This is your first foray into, into this, and because you have young families, you're not able to, to attend very often, but you've promised you're always going to attend from now on, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
No, we're done.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
We're done. We are done. We're done. You've heard the motion. All those in favor of this non-binding resolution, press one. All those opposed, press two. And I will give you six seconds to do so. Done. All right. The motion carries. We have Article M, which will be followed by...
U.
U. Chair will entertain a motion under Article M. M.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Sarah Wilkinson moves that the town raise the allowable amount of property tax liability reduction in exchange for volunteer services by persons over the age of sixty, from seven hundred fifty dollars per annum to fifteen hundred dollars per annum pursuant to General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? First here from anyone under sixty, if there is such a person here. Yes?
I just want to know how many hours of the town. How many hours does the town get?
How many hours?
I believe it's based on minimum wage.
Based on minimum wage.
Whatever the legal minimum wages, and then the ceiling of whatever you vote.
Any further questions? You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries. We move on to U, which will be followed by... O.
It's a petition, no.
Is the petitioner here? Okay. Can you put up the, the other video? There we go. You want to handle this one? Ted?
Very briefly, thank you, Moderator. Ted Tarver, One Fifty-four Main Street. This is a revenue-neutral binding resolution, protecting and encouraging the town and the residents thereof to appreciate, use, and preserve open space. It's pretty much revenue-neutral because, like woodland acres and all, yes, we would get tax money if it were developed, but we would also have to provide a lot of services. This way, land near conservation land is much more valuable, and so we get extra taxes from it. So without any work, we get more money. But I think this was brought as a shock when I saw that the, we saw, that the Rights of Way Committee wished to be cut to nothing practically. And thank you very, very much for supporting that effort of keeping our paths and trails open. I think it's very important for the town economically as well as morally. So I would urge, again, this is a principle saying we do not want any more cuts. I don't think we're going to get great heaps of grant money from the current federal government. So I think it's important that we register, that we recognize, open space, paths, trails, and so forth are important, both to our need for oxygen and water, but for recreation and morale in general. So I would urge support of this resolution. Again, we're not demanding any one thing, but just, just so that the town administrator, the town committees keep it in mind, that we are recognizing these values and that we want to perpetuate them. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Sure.
Okay. Banya, I wrote this because nature is actually disappearing. Everything from Beverly to Boston is artificial. When I first moved here, there was a subdivision approved for seventy houses on fifty acres, and they were going to demolish the land, all of nature, to accomplish that. It would have been wall-to-wall housing, from Stockholm Avenue to Lanesville to Woodbury Valley. So, and in Manchester, when I moved there, there were, again, fifty to seventy houses on two hundred acres, again, cutting down Long Hill. We stopped that, and I think, I hope that we're stopping the woodland acres. Woodland acres happens to be the highest point on Cape Anne. It's, oh dear, it's sixty-five meters. Mount Anne is seventy-five meters. But I think the fact that when you clear-cut something, that's the end of nature. So this article says that, Article U is a declaration of intent to respect nature in its historic, unaltered state. We recognize as a principle of law the intrinsic value of natural lands in their historic natural estate. Said lands are to be preserved in perpetuity for the purpose of sustaining life. So that's pretty key, definition of intrinsic value of natural land. One, nature is the only source of life. So when you clear-cut something, you've taken out all the regenerative characteristics, all the life-sustaining, it doesn't bloom again, it doesn't clean the air and water. Trees clean. Trees clean air. They respire. They take water up the trunks, and they clean the groundwater, and they clean the air. Photosynthesis is dependent on chlorophyll. All the toxins that are coming in airborne in these rainstorms are killing chlorophyll. Our trees are actually dying. It's interrupting with the DNA process, and so we have to begin to recognize that global warming is actually global pollution, and we are subject to that. Seabrook is discharging every day all their operating gases. They travel over the Bay of Ipswich. They're hot, they cool, and as they drop at an interface, that happens to be Essex, Ipswich, Gloucester, and Rockport. And those isotopes coat the leaves and the grasses with a very fine dust, which does work into the soil. It gets into the DNA of the plant, and of course, it falls on the leaves as rain. Nature is the only self-renewing living system, providing clean air, clean water, chlorophyll, photosynthesis, trees, leaves, all life-sustaining processes, all living beings. We can't live without green photosynthesis chlorophyll. And the discharges from Seabrook kill chlorophyll. You'll notice in your yard, you'll see that the leaves are smaller on your trees, on the maple leaves. Our evergreens are dying. Near my house, they're 80 feet tall. They're desiccated. And I don't know that there's any way to stop this. Global warming is pursuing its own course, and it's... But I think it's time we focused on what to do, if there is any way to stop this. So the question here is, will Rockport become wall-to-wall housing, like all the land between Beverly and Boston? Or will we preserve the unique natural beauty of our granite island? Nature is under fatal assault globally from airborne toxins that are killing our trees by killing chlorophyll, thereby stopping photosynthesis. Toxic plumes are coating forests and farms, altering metabolism of plants, altering DNA. There are only two miles of air over our heads. That's all. That is all the air that we and the trees have to breathe. That air is loaded with exhaust fumes from thousands, millions of cars and airplanes globally daily. The carbon monoxide exhaust combines with other toxins and chemicals to form a fine dust of particles dispersed by rain to contaminate the sea, the chlorophyll in the seas. So that we're... Rockport and globally, we're being... suffering from pollution. So I think this deserves more than a few minutes of discussion. It requires a focused effort to protect what is left of nature. This is an urgent economic and political problem, how to make money without destroying nature, without cutting down all... and clearing all lots with asphalt and bulldozers. Can I just read a quote from Thoreau, and then I'll...
I'm afraid we're out of time here. But I appreciate your sentiments on this, and we're going to vote in a moment.
You don't want to hear Thoreau? All right.
Is there anybody who tends to present an opposing view on this? Okay. You've heard the motion. All those... Sure.
Hi. Jim Ugoney, 33 Main Street. I'm just not exactly sure what we'd be voting on with this, and I just want to say that I agree with everything in your intent, and I think it's wonderful. However, in all the towns I've lived in, I'm amazed how Rockport sensibly approaches managed growth and the recognition of any type of project that we've encountered since I've been here with the help of the planning board, the mathematical equations of taxes and land use afforded by FinCom, and dedicated citizens who lend their opinion in forums like this. And I'm just not sure, when I read this, is this for lands that are owned by the town? Or is this for the preservation of any... disposition of any private properties? Thank you.
Yeah. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. You have five seconds. Go. Thank you. Motion passes. Okay. We move on. We have three left. OJT. OJT.
And F.
We did M.
F.
We did it. Yeah, we did it. If you want to stay longer, we can do it again. All right. Chair will entertain a motion under O.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I don't remember who was moving. I'm moving this for select person Wilkinson. I just...
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. That the town accept the provisions under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), and to establish a trust to be known as the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust, whose purpose shall be to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in the town of Rockport for the benefit of low- and moderate-income households, and in implementation thereof will amend Rockport Code of Bylaws for those purposes by inserting a new subchapter E. in Chapter 7 entitled Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which will include the establishment of a Board of Trustees to govern said trust as printed on pages 67 through 70 of the Town Meeting Voters' booklet, and including the following changes. In paragraph C, change 2 to 1 member of the Board of Selectmen, and add 1 member from the Community Preservation Committee's Housing Authority representative. In paragraph D, insert the words "in the town of Rockport" after the word "quarterly", and change the required barring vote from majority to 2/3. And in paragraph K, insert the words "as well as be included in the annual town report" after the words of each year.
Got it. Moved and...
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
Mary Devaney, 1 Hobart Court. I just have a question. I thought this was... affordable housing was included under the Community Preservation Fund.
Want me to? It is. It's one of the reserves from... Oh, we have community preservation members here. Do you want me to continue, or you want to do it? There are three areas that the Community Preservation Act allows us to devote funds to, and affordable housing is one of them. However, what the Community Preservation Committee does is allocate those to that fund, but then projects and people have to come forward to be able to use it. They apply to the CPC with appropriate projects, and that'll either get recommended or not to Town Meeting. So the Community Preservation Committee itself doesn't save money for the purpose... It's not a trust fund.
Any additional quote? Right over there. Erin?
Erin Battistelli, Board of Selectmen. So what I... My understanding of this is that if we accept the provisions of the mass state law that create or lay out the sort of parameters of establishing a trust fund like this, it allows that trust fund to accept real or personal property, grants, gifts that may come our way. So I don't think we're in... Am I correct, Linda, that we're not in a position to do that? If somebody were to donate, say, their real property in the name of affordable housing, can we not accept that at the moment, and that this would allow us to?
Right. We can't accept it now. Now, if this passes, the trust can also apply to the Community Preservation Committee to build up the trust to be able to actually take actions to purchase or rent out or whatever the affordable housing.
Want to speak?
Me not.
Minna Shidi, Board of Selectmen. I also believe that off the top of the CPA funds every year, 10%, for instance, goes to open space. 10% would go to affordable housing. Is that correct? Right off the top, if this trust was established.
What'd you just say?
For instance, 10% comes off the top to go to open space. That goes to the Conservation Fund. Does 10% also come off the top to go to affordable housing?
In the Community Preservation Fund, it does. But it doesn't leave that fund.
Right. But it would be dedicated to this fund. Correct?
Nope.
Why don't we let Mel talk about that?
Mel Michaels, Treasurer of the Community Preservation Fund. The law requires that we take 10% to put in each one of those three funds, okay? But that money stays with the Community Preservation Committee to be used for those particular areas, okay? It would not necessarily go to this fund unless it was requested on an application, like everybody else does. Okay?
Anybody else? Larry?
Larry, Halo 45 Stockholm Avenue. I'm just not in favor or against it. Just a question. It says it will include the establishment of a Board of Trustees. How many people on that... will be on that board, and the stipends that will be associated with each board member?
Mr. Moderator, if you look at your voters' book, it has every single word of the text of how many people will be on the Board of Trustees, that they will not be allowed to receive any compensation whatsoever, except maybe mileage or some, you know, to reimburse for tolls or something. That's it. And was it an 11-person board?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. Page 68, paragraph C. Any further questions? Toby?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. If you care about affordable housing, this is the necessary first step in the right direction. It is altogether a credit to Linda Sanders, who put it together. It's excellent, as, you know, written out. Before we give it so much as one penny, a lot of things need to be spelled out, and Linda Sanders has said it will, practically speaking, take a year to get it up and running. But before we give it any money, we want to get questions answered about who we're going to provide housing to, and whether it's going to be rental housing or housing that the town would build and sell, how long restrictions would run, whether it would be centrally located or spread through the town. There are a whole long list of questions, and all of those need to be dealt with as a public matter. If you've read through the text, it guarantees that the meetings are public meetings. That's good. It's not good enough. The Board of Selectmen need to meet with the trust and hold public meetings so that the public is involved at the beginning and buys into it. Otherwise, it's not going to work.
But you liked some of it. Cool. Anything else? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We now go to J., which will be followed by T.
Mr. Moderator?
Maybe sleepy time, T., but it'll be T. Yes?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator. Roger Levine moves that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 to the Capital Reserve Stabilization Fund for the purposes of Article J., as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. We now move on to Article T., which I've been told there may not be a motion, but there'll be an explanation as to why there may not be a motion. I don't know if I'm accurate. And then we'll have two, I believe, quick resolutions.
So, Ms. Moderator?
Yes?
Would you allow your address?
Sure.
Begging the forgiveness of those assembled here, including Toby, I understand. You would not like me to speak if I'm talking on something that isn't being moved, but I'm adjusting my original petition of Article T. and not moving it based on things that recently happened, so I have a short statement about it. I am the Article T. petitioner. Article T. was created in an attempt to return some say in the fate of the woodland acres property to Rockport voters, and to secure the land for the town for a purpose to be determined by Town Meeting vote in the future. It was a response to what was seen by some as a twisting of the right of voters... Sorry, a thwarting of the right of voters to approve or deny a multi-year effort by several town committees and the Essex Green Belt to acquire the land for conservation. It was also an attempt to rescue the land from the whims of the open market and whatever an outside developer might want to do with it. The most recent developments just this week was that the Board of Selectmen voted to release $500,000 from the Community Preservation Fund towards purchase of the property for conservation, and there are also indications that the original conservation initiative is back on track. Based on these developments, I will not be moving this question, though this perhaps misses an opportunity to attend to the dire issue of the lack of more affordable, moderate-income housing suited to the needs of families with school-aged children. I think it's the right thing to do at this time, though I would implore the Board of Selectmen and town committees to act on more substantive steps to attend to that dire need. Thank you.
You've heard the non-motion. Is there a motion? No, there's two more things we have to do. Damn it, Brian, you were doing so well. Okay. We now move on to two resolutions, and I'll do mine first. And it was a resolution to ask you if we, the 2017 Springtown Meeting, are satisfied with the performance of the voting clickers which we use today. All those in favor, press 1. And all those opposed, no, and we'll have five seconds. All right. So that carries. We'll continue on this process, and then if the vote is yes, do you, the meeting, want the town moderator and clerk to continue to negotiate with other communities to share these puppies, or do you want us to have our own? So if you want to share, press 1. If you want to be stingy and have a... No. If you want to have us not work with other communities to share the cost of these, press 2. Okay. All right. Well, there were two questions. I divided them. So if you want us to work with other communities to try to share the cost of these and shuffle them back and forth to other communities, press 1. And if you want us not to pursue that, and again, this is non-binding, but press 2. And you have five seconds. Time? All right. We will continue to negotiate with other communities to try to... All right, we will continue to negotiate with other communities to try to share the cost. Now, there's one more resolution by Mr. Ring, then I'll hear from Brian Sullivan.
As if this meeting wasn't long enough. Yep. So this is a non-binding resolution. Oh. Yeah, I guess it's there. To see if our town will vote to affirm that our state legislators should not be allowed to vote to raise their own legislative pay, and that approval of any state legislative pay raised should be referred to the approval of the citizens of the Commonwealth or anything, or any, or any, or act on anything relative thereto.
All right, you've heard the resolution, you want to talk on it briefly?
Yes. Just this past year, the state legislature met, and they passed one of the fastest-moving legislative bills in state history, which probably only took about four or five days. Normal bills tend to go, to even get a bill number, take six months. This took four days, and it was to raise their own legislative pay. And across the board, they increased their pay by eighteen million dollars. Now, I don't know about you, but in our own jobs, we can't vote to raise our own pay. I guess if we're self-employed, that's different, but then it all depends on our customers. But I can't. And it just speaks to a lot of corruption on Beacon Hill, that they could do that. They voted to raise their own base pays, their stipends. The House Speaker is one of the highest-paid House Speakers in the nation for the state, this, our State House Speaker. I guess the only thing I would do with this resolution is just send it to our representatives in the State House, and let them know that we're discontent with lawmakers being able to raise their own pay, and that we should have input in that. And not only that, but the bill moved a lot very too fast. So I ask for support of this resolution to send to our state representatives. Thank you.
You've heard this non-binding resolution, does anybody want to talk about this non-binding resolution at quarter past seven in the evening after a ten-hour meeting? Oh, Mr. Tar. Go ahead, get in front of a microphone.
154 Broadway, I just wanted to remind you from this gathering that our state senator voted against the raise and refused to take it.
All right.
Yep, that's true.
Any further discussion? You've heard the motion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed say no? All right, let's use our clickers. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, press one, and all those opposed, press no. You have five seconds. Okay. And that motion carries. I believe Mr. Sullivan may make a motion to dissolve the meeting. Dissolve. Damn it.
Thank you.
Don't forget to return your clicker, all those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you. I'm getting my chicken and going home.